Good evening and welcome to the fourth Town Hall with the Cannabis Working Committee. My name is Councilmember Angie Reyes English. I'll go ahead and let the Board introduce themselves here shortly, but before we get started, I want to give a little bit of housekeeping. Please silence your phones. If you must take a call, please take your call outside of this room. There are restrooms in the back, in the lobby area. We will have a Q and A, question and answer session, and we'll give further instructions as we near that. At this time, I want to go ahead and introduce the Board members here, starting to my right, and then we'll go on to our consultants.
Good evening. My name is Vaughn Norris, City Manager for the City of Hawthorne.
I'm Greg McLean. I'm the interim Community Development Director for Hawthorne.
I'm Robert Kim. I'm the City Attorney.
Again, Councilmember Angie Reyes English, excuse me, Chair of the Cannabis Working Committee.
Kenny Craig, Sergeant with Hawthorne Police Department.
I'm Ebony J. McGee Anderson. I am the Director of EJMA Planning and Development. We are a boutique planning and development firm that specializes in special land uses like cannabis.
Good evening, everyone. Attorney Tony Forge, owner of Four Leaf Consulting, a cannabis consulting and compliance firm.
Thank you and welcome also to our residents watching from home. Ebony, I would like to start with you and start with the overview, and we'll go from there. Oh, yes, thank you so much, sorry for that. If we could first all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll get started. Please face the flag. Repeat after me. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much for the reminder.
No problem.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Again, I'm Ebony J. McGee Anderson. We will be leading this discussion tonight, going through a variety of policy-related issues regarding cannabis, and give you a roadmap to what we are anticipating the cannabis ordinance to look like in the City of Hawthorne. So we'll first give you an overview of what we're going to discuss tonight. We'll start off with an introduction to Proposition 64. Then we'll go into a city legislative timeline, discussing all of the policy decisions that have been made thus far, and where we are with the city regarding cannabis. And then we're going to give you an overview of this California Department of Public Health's Let's Talk Cannabis program. It is a fact-based program that the city has, I'm sorry, that the state has put together to help residents understand what's happening with cannabis, what happens with cannabis legislation, and what operators are allowed and not allowed to do. And then we'll go into some of the state regulations for all of the commercial cannabis activities. Finally, we'll take you through the licensing process as we anticipate it to happen in the city. And then we'll have a pretty robust question and answer section, so if you have any questions, you can save them till the end of the presentation. You can also use the note cards that are provided in the back to write any questions if you prefer to hand those in at the end of the night. So we'll start off with our introduction to Prop 64, and I'm going to turn that over to Tony Forge, who will be able to walk you through all of those things.
Okay. We first want to start off with the timeline of how we even got to legalization in California. And it really started in 1996 with the Compassionate Use Act. And this was significant because it basically said, "Look, if you're suffering from any type of debilitating disease, if you have cancer, if you have AIDS, if you have chronic pain, you would be able to use, possess, and own cannabis." And this was very significant because, at that time and currently, cannabis is federally illegal. So what this proposition did was pretty much say people would not have any type of criminal liability, as long as they got some type of medical directive from their doctor or medical provider indicating that they were suffering, then they would be able to use cannabis, and they would not have to fear any type of criminal prosecution. They would not have to fear it, and their caretakers would not have to fear it. And so, fast forward to 2015, we have the Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act. And this was starting to get the framework around cannabis, saying that there would be different cannabis license types. It also said now cannabis could be for profit, because before it was collectives, and though people did make money, it was a not-for-profit model. It also said during this time that there would be a Bureau of Cannabis Control. Now Ebony's going to talk a little later in the presentation that that bureau is now the Department of Cannabis Control, but the framework for cannabis license types were developed. And then we fast-forward a year later, and this is Prop 64. And Prop 64 did a couple of things. Number one, it said if you're 21 years or older, you could own, possess, and grow cannabis as long as you wanted to. But there were different, significant caveats. The first caveat was, number one, you could buy cannabis, but you had to be 21, and you had to have some type of government ID indicating that you were 21. You could only own one ounce and possess one ounce of cannabis flower, eight ounces of cannabis concentrate, and grow six plants per residence. And they could not be open, they had to be hidden from the public. So that was very significant. What this also did was Prop 64 said now municipalities in the state could regulate and tax cannabis. It could regulate the sale of cannabis, the growing of cannabis, the cultivation of cannabis, and the manufacturing of cannabis products. So it was two tracks, regulation and taxation of cannabis throughout the whole supply chain, as well as giving individuals 21 years and older the opportunity to own and possess cannabis. And so we see that Prop 64 was overwhelmingly agreed by the State of California, close to 60% statewide, and the same in Los Angeles County. There were also two bills. And the first bill, we talked about the medical, the Compassionate Use Act and Prop 64. And what SB 93 did was basically merge both of them. Instead of having these two competing kind of bills, what the governor did was merge both of them, and that's what we have. We call it McMurca, but it was the combination of adult use and medicinal use acts. And then AB 133 said, "Well, instead of having one license type per residence, or per physical -- what am I trying to say? Resi --"
Resident.
Resident! It is for residents! You can have multiple license types, sorry about that. And so before you had a physical address, you can, that was the word I was looking for, you could only have one license type per physical address. And what this did was say, "No, you can have a number of license types." So the whole idea of vertical integration, multiple license types, as long as you had the space, the long as you passed all of the state's criteria, that was allowed. And so now we're looking at what has happened in the City of Hawthorne. So in the beginning, in 2016, there was a moratorium on basically adult use. And you could not have adult use, and U2134 extended that moratorium for an additional 15 days. And then we had in 2017, the City of Hawthorne again restricted and controlled the use of adult use and non-medicinal use. In November of 3rd, 2020, that's when you had the Measure CC passing, basically saying if cannabis is going to be allowed in the City of Hawthorne, then there would be a business tax attached to cannabis, which was approximately 5%. And then what we have now, at the beginning of 2022, to where we're sitting here today, is really going over what would an ordinance look like in the City of Hawthorne. We have a working group that meets every other Thursday. We talk about these things. As was stated at the beginning of this presentation, this is our fourth time having the Community Outreach Program, and that's where we are now. And so Ebony's going to talk about that in the process and where we're going a little later in the presentation. But that is how we got here from the state, and also here in the City of Hawthorne. And so you can see the results from your Measure CC in the city. Close to 62% of you said yes, while close to 39% of you said no. And so what we want to do now is kind of talk about what is the real reality concerning cannabis, because there's all these, you know, rumors about where you can smoke, how you can smoke, it has to be a particular place. So we're going to talk to you, and we named it Mythbusters, because we're going to give you what the state laws are concerning cannabis. Number one, you can smoke cannabis, medicinal cannabis, if you're 18 years or older, and you have to have some type of physician's recommendation. If you're 21 years or older, you just need a government ID to purchase cannabis. And you can use cannabis at your private residence. However, you cannot smoke cannabis in public. And if you're renting from some landlord, you must make sure that it is in your contract that cannabis is allowed. There are some contracts that say, "No." Even though you're renting out and you're paying rent every month, the landlord does not want cannabis on premises. So you have to make sure that cannabis is allowed on your particular lease agreement or rental agreement. Again, if you're 21 years or older, you can grow six plants or less. You can turn it into a product, but you cannot use any type of butane or the such. When we get to the manufacturing business license type, and Ebony goes through that, you're going to understand why you cannot do that. And there are specific rules in some counties and cities regarding where and how to grow it. Some cities say you have to do it in a closed area, it cannot be to the public and the such. So there is no longer this notion that you're planting cannabis in the front yard or in the backyard. No, that doesn't exist. It has to be inside of your home. And also, you cannot drive around, you as an operator of your car or a passenger, with an open container of cannabis. It has to be sealed and locked, and Ebony will talk about what that packaging looks like. It's child-protected packaging, and if you're going to have it in your car, you also need to have it locked in your trunk. That's another option. So it's either closed and packaged in your car, or locked up in your trunk. Those are the only two options, but you're not smoking it openly as a passenger, as well as an operator of the vehicle. Other Mythbusters, like stated, you cannot consume cannabis in a public place, like a restaurant, bar, or hotel. You cannot smoke cannabis where it's illegal to smoke tobacco. You cannot smoke cannabis within 1,000 feet of a school, daycare center, or youth center while children are present. You cannot possess or use cannabis on any type of federal property or federal land, because it is still federally illegal as a Schedule I drug. You cannot take cannabis across state lines. It doesn't make a difference if you're going from a legal state to another legal state, you cannot take it across state lines. The cannabis that you use and possess in California stays in California. If you're in Nevada and wish to have cannabis there, you have to purchase it in Nevada. So no crossing state lines. And again, as I stated before, you cannot drive with an open container of cannabis. You can be pulled over, just like you would for a DUI, under the influence. If you're under the influence of cannabis as well, same rules apply. And so a lot of people are familiar with dispensaries or retailers, and they would like to know, "What can I purchase when I go into a dispensary?" And so basically, you can purchase cannabis goods such as packaged flower, pre-rolls, topicals, and edibles. It should be noted, since 2018, all cannabis must be state-tested. There are testing labs throughout the state, and those tests have to pass different types of metrics, different types of evaluations that the state has outlined. So all cannabis products must be tested. Ebony will talk about the role of the distributor that takes batch testing from a manufacturer or cultivator, makes sure it passes all tests before you purchase it in a dispensary. You can also get cannabis accessories, such as pipes, rolling paper, vape cartridges, and batteries. And again, branded merchandise, caps, hats, hoodies, purses, all of that can be purchased in a dispensary as well. And so a lot of people are under the idea that they can buy cannabis anytime, any type of date. No, the state has very, very specific rules of purchase. You can only purchase cannabis from 6:00 in the morning to 10:00 in the evening. All store transactions, this means dispensary transactions, must be finished by 10:00 PM. And if you are going through a non-storefront delivery, non-storefront and delivery are exactly the same thing, all drivers must return back to their place by 10:00. So again, not all off-hours, not in the middle of the night, very prescribed times in which you can purchase cannabis. Also, it should be noted that all retail, all retailers, all dispensaries have to have a state-approved security plan. And what the state is looking at is saying, you know, where are your cameras going to be located? Where is your lighting going to be located? The cameras have to have a certain amount of pixels. The cameras have to be so much as they capture video. There must be 24-hour surveillance. You can also, you must have a security guard that's actually on property. You have the option of armed or not armed, but security must be there. All points of entry must be secured and monitored. So it's a pretty robust system in terms of security at retailers or dispensaries. And Ebony's going to walk us through now about some of the statistics regarding crime rates, and we're using historical data from jurisdictions where there has been a longer period of time for cannabis. And Ebony will go and explain that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. We have some crime statistics here, and I just want to be clear that these are violent crimes that we're reporting, or that we have taken data from reporting sites from the police department. We're mostly using Denver, Colorado, because they were one of the first adult-use cannabis states. So we see that from regulating the market, the crime rates have actually decreased. And I think one of the reasons that the department cited was because when you have unregulated cannabis activity, you're going to have a lot of crime around that, because the business operators and owners are pretty much solving all of their problems, you know, outside of the police department. So we want to be mindful about discussing this, because we understand that the crime statistics and data varies from city to city, it's going to vary from state to state. But it is important to note, because we want to focus the discussion on regulation. So we'll go into the next slide, Nick. But in Washington State, they saw violent crimes decrease as much as 10%. So that's a significant decrease in violent crimes, especially around cannabis. When we're talking, when we're framing the ordinance, it is going to be framed around regulation, because the important, the important piece of this message is that regulation is important to help operators operating in compliance with state laws, but also what you want to see in the city. So we have an opportunity here to develop an ordinance that includes design standards, additional security measures, whatever it is that the city feels is important for the city, the city operators to comply with. And so we've talked about creating jobs here, a local hiring mandate, and additional things that will be unique to Hawthorne. While all operators do have to comply with the state law, and cities have to, at a very minimum, meet the requirements of state law, we can have more restrictive, have a more restrictive ordinance, or have more restrictive operational or compliance requirements. So just keep that in mind as we're moving through, and as you're jotting down the questions that you have, or the ideas that you have for the ordinance, please keep in mind that you do have the ability to ask for more than what the state requires, but we're not allowed to ask for less than what the state requires. So we'll get into what the state requires now, with giving a little bit of a background on Prop 64 and the regulations around commercial cannabis activity. As Tony pointed out, the Department of Cannabis Control was previously called the Bureau of Cannabis Control. And I like to have this slide in the presentations, because as you're doing your own research online, or as you are hearing individuals talk about cannabis regulation, you may hear some of these former agencies. But what Governor Newsom did was consolidate all of these departments within these agencies to create the Department of Cannabis Control. So under, for cultivation, the department, or I'm sorry, the agency that formerly oversaw cultivation licensing was called Cal Cannabis, and it was a program under the California Department of Food and Agriculture. And manufacturing licenses were overseen by the California Department of Public Health. And then distribution, retail, delivery, and testing licenses were all issued by the former agency, Bureau of Cannabis Control. Now, all of these agencies, or all of these functions for licensing, are, happen under the Department of Cannabis Control, and they have staff from these agencies that port it over. So you're still going to have that level of expertise there for cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, retail and delivery, and testing. So the first state license type is cultivation, and cultivation includes any mix of small, medium, or large operations, indoor, outdoor, mixed light, specialty cottage, or nursery activities. And essentially, cultivation is anything that you're going to grow. So you'll hear words like "grow" or "cultivation sites." Those are typically indoor or outdoor cultivation facilities where they're growing cannabis. Nurseries are also a cultivation license type, and those are non-mature plants. So those would be, you know, your seedlings, they are not flowering plants. There are a few variety of cultivation types, so we always think it's important to give visuals of what those look like, so that you have a point of reference. This is a picture of an indoor cultivation site. It looks a little dark on my end, so hopefully you can see it on your angle, but it's exactly what it sounds like, indoor growing. All of the plants will be located indoors. There, the state has requirements on the canopy, so they measure the green areas basically around your plants, and that's how they determine the size of your canopy determines the size of your license. Ultimately, the different license types are just for regulatory purpose and licensing purpose for fees. That's how the fees are determined, is based on the size of your cultivation. Indoor cultivation, you're not going to have, you're not going to see as much of in the LA area, because we don't have large enough spaces for outdoor cultivation. And many of the cities don't allow outdoor cultivation. So we see mostly indoor cultivation around here, and that is also what the city is anticipating. Outdoor cultivation is just that, it's going to be your direct sun-grown cannabis flower. And you're going to see a lot of this more in northern California, in like Humboldt County, where you have larger cannabis farms. You will see some of this, I believe Riverside County allows for some level of outdoor cultivation or mixed light, which we will get into next, but ultimately, these are going to be your larger cannabis farms. And finally, mixed light cultivation is basically a greenhouse. So if you think about how normal greenhouses work, it's kind of a combination of both sunlight, direct sunlight, and then your artificial lights, like lamps and other bulbs. So that's mixed light, outdoor, and indoor cultivation. Those are the main types of cultivation license at the state. Next, we'll talk briefly about manufacturing. Manufacturing products are anything that's a byproduct of cannabis, so we're going to see your topicals, your tinctures, edibles. All of those things are manufactured cannabis products. Typically, we say "flower" when we're talking about just the cannabis flower in its raw form, and then anything that's added to it or becoming a product thereof, we're going, it's going to be covered under your manufacturing license type. This is a picture of a cannabis manufacturing lab. I like to show this photo, because it looks a lot like any other commercial-grade food level, you know, manufacturing lab. And a lot of the regulations are mirroring that. So you can see they have protective hair coverings, they have gloves, the state regulates them somewhat similar to anything else that's edible. Distribution is the next license type. So we have distribution and delivery, and oftentimes, there's confusion between those. Distribution is wholesale, so we're looking at business-to-business only. Distributors are not allowed to distribute cannabis to residents or to other customers that are, that do not have a license. So it's licensee-to-licency. Your distributors are the ones that are going to take your manufactured products or your cannabis flower from your cultivators and your manufacturers, possibly even other distributors, and deliver them to retailers. They are not allowed to deliver them into the general public. So business-to-business for distribution. There is both first-party and third-party. First-party distro is a producer to the customer, which in this case would be a retailer. So again, if I was growing my own cannabis, if I had a cultivation license, and I wanted to get it distributed to a retailer, again, that would be my customer, not the general public, then I could get a first-party distribution license. If I was a distributor that wanted to buy wholesale product from producers and sell it to retailers, then I would have a third-party distribution license. There are a few different distribution licenses at the state, so the state does ask very clear questions about what you're doing in your distribution activities to understand what type of license you need. And this is just a picture of a warehouse. This is a cannabis warehouse, looks like any other distribution warehouse. As you can see, there are barcodes on all of the boxes, because the state tracks everything from seed to sale. So when you're buying cannabis, know that on the back end, in our favorite system called METRIC, the state is tracking every single point. Everyone who touches that product, whether it's a seed, or if it's a manufactured product, everyone who's ever touched it is in the system. It is tracked all the way through with these barcodes. Every plant has a tag, and yes, even in those large cultivation, outdoor sites, every single plant has a tag, and each of those tags has a serial number. That serial number tells how many children it has, and how many children its children have. Like, everything is tracked into the METRIC system and monitored by the state. Early on in regulation, we didn't have METRIC tracking, but that quickly changed with the regulations, and so operators were given an opportunity to get all of their product into the system. But now, every single product that you purchase at a licensed retailer will have a little barcode number on it, called a UID number, a unique identification. And that number will track your product all the way back to its infancy. So that is a big part of why legalization is important, or regulation is important, because now we have the ability to test these products and monitor that testing to ensure that patients are able to get products that are safe, they are appropriately dosed, and that you have all of the information on your product labels that you need to make decisions for yourself. But again, this is a very, very typical picture of what a distribution facility looks like in cannabis. Next, we have testing labs, and we've talked a little bit about that. But all cannabis must be tested by an accredited testing lab. The state is very strict with these testing labs and who can get these testing licenses. If you have a testing lab, you are not allowed to hold any other cannabis license ever. So the state is really, really strict with these licenses, because they want to ensure that the testing is not only done appropriately, but it's fair and there's no conflicts of interest. So keep that in mind. Testing labs are all accredited, and they have to be licensed, and they go through a pretty rigorous process at the state. And next, we have our retail licenses. So the state has So the state has two main retail licenses, the storefront and non-storefront. Non-storefront is typically known or commonly known as delivery. So our non-storefront licenses, they also are allowed to do delivery as a part of their license, but there is a standalone, non-storefront license for delivery. So we have delivery services that are not open to the public at all, but they can deliver to the public. And then we have storefront retailers that have a store, so you can go in and purchase cannabis. So those are the two types of retail. And here's just a couple of photos of what a typical licensed cannabis retailer looks like. You might remember some of the Prop 215 stores, they didn't always have the best lighting or they didn't follow all of the building code requirements because they were kind of operating under the radar, which is yet another reason that we talk about cannabis in the framework of regulation so that we can make sure that all of these operators are meeting all of our codes. They should be meeting the building codes, the plumbing codes, the electrical codes. We want to make sure that all of these businesses are operating just like any other business in the city. So these are two stores that have licenses and have met all of those codes, and that's why they look like something similar to what you would see in any other retailer in the city, like, you know, a drugstore or Target. And finally, we have a microbusiness. We don't see a ton of these as much as when we first had regulation. Tony talked about integrated licensing. The state, when we first had licensing, they created this microbusiness license because there were a lot of small operators that had multiple uses. So they might have had a storefront, but in the back, they may have done infused products or maybe had a small nursery or cultivation. So there is a license types that a license type that allows you to do three authorized commercial cannabis activities. In fact, you have to have at least three, but there are some, there are some caveats to that. For example, you have to have a canopy of less than 10,000 square feet. So it's kind of small. We're looking at more boutique-type operations. So you might, from time to time, see operators have a microbusiness license that could include retail. In the city of Los Angeles, microbusiness licenses at this time cannot include retail. So it really is, it really could vary city to city what those three activities could entail, but this is a possibility in the structure, in the licensing structure. Next, we'll get into licensing at the local level. So at the state level, we have these very detailed license types, and you know that there's different sizes, and there's indoor, and there's outdoor, and there's mixed light. But at the state level, or I'm sorry, at the local level, we're seeing more of an umbrella type of license. So instead of all of the different cultivation, we might just have a cultivation license. And then your local ordinance will specify what those cultivation activities can include or not include. And the same with manufacturing. There are two different license types at the state. There's both non-volatile extraction and volatile extraction. The main difference being the type of extraction process. If you're using any type of highly flammable liquids or hazardous as it's defined by the FIRE Code, because non-volatile does include ethanol, which is flammable, but it's not considered volatile. So in Los Angeles, only type six licenses have been issued thus far, so we have non-volatile extraction. But there are cities that do allow for type seven licenses, and those are very heavily regulated by the FIRE Department. So keep that in mind that the FIRE, FIRE Engineering Services will be reviewing anything as it relates to manufacturing of any sort, but particularly around volatile extraction because they have to include a closed-loop system and a lot of equipment that has to be certified. So it is a very difficult license type to obtain, and it is heavily regulated by the FIRE Department and the state. And then finally, testing and retail and distribution, all the same at the local level. We usually have an umbrella license type for those, and then the city ordinance will tell you which activities you can or cannot do under that umbrella license type. So here is a map actually of the cities that are currently regulating cannabis in the county of Los Angeles. So we were focusing on the county here because obviously Hawthorne is in Los Angeles County, and these are all independent incorporated cities. But there are other counties. Orange County is allowing cannabis as well, various cities within Orange County. San Bernardino County has allowed cannabis within certain cities that have adopted ordinances, and also Riverside County. So Riverside City hasn't adopted an ordinance, I don't believe yet, but the county itself has, so all of the unincorporated areas within Riverside County do allow cannabis activity. So here is a list of the LA County cities currently regulating cannabis. You can see they're a mix of size, you know, demographic. There's a lot of variety here. We have everything from small little cities like the island of Avalon. We have Carson, which is close to you. We have Pasadena, West Hollywood, Santa Monica, Malibu. A lot of places, a lot of cities inside of LA County are allowing some level of cannabis activity, and recently, the county has put out a draft ordinance or asked the county council to begin exploring cannabis activities again. They started early in 2018, but the ordinance got put on hold. So it looks like they're going to be reexamining the ordinance and allowing, starting with cannabis retail, and I think they're doing 200 licenses they're starting out with in the county. So even if your particular cities within the county do not adopt any cannabis regulations or continue to have a moratorium on cannabis, the county, the unincorporated areas that surround your cities and the cities that are adjacent to you still will have cannabis activity, and right now, they are allowed to do interstate deliveries. So even if your city is not one that permits cannabis, you can still get deliveries in your city. So that has been to court, I think, at the state. The state was sued, and they have won that lawsuit, and I think it's, it might be on appeal. So stay tuned for more information on that, on where that lands, but right now, it is possible. So one of the things that we are looking at is something similar to LA's ordinance where even if you're just delivering to the city, there should be a business tax on that. So there are a lot of ways for you to capture some of that tax revenue for your adjacent cities because the county will be allowing 200 licenses. And here, we're just going to go through a couple of slides showing you some of the design elements and packaging elements of regulated cannabis. This is a dispensary on Crenshaw. It's called Gorilla RX, and it's the first approved social equity retailer in Los Angeles. So you can see here, it's bright, there's a lot of bright colors. The staff is very friendly, they're very knowledgeable, they're pushing wellness. And so I think it's important to show this image in contrast to what we're typically seeing with the green crosses and those things of the pre-regulation or the Prop 215 dispensaries. These new cannabis retailers look very much like what we see in retail right now that's non-cannabis. You can see here, a lot of the packaging, a lot of these companies have been in business now for several years, or they've started even in other states that started before California. You can see there's Popem Barkley is one of those brands, and they look, they're very heavy on medicinal products. So they started in the medicinal time, and they're very heavy on their medicinal packaging, so they have a lot of product labels, a lot of information about their products and how to properly dose them. They have very low-dose things for, you know, folks who are just trying cannabis for the first times, even sometimes lower than, you know, maybe one gram of THC. Heavy CBD. There's a lot of products out there that are really catering to our medicinal patients. And you can see that the state has done a really good job with regulating packaging because it looks nothing like what we remember from 215 where you get a brown paper bag and you're not really sure what's in it. Now, you will see everything on the store, in the stores has clear labeling. It is child-resistant, it is tamper-resistant. There are a lot of things here that are pulling from, you know, other codes regarding edibles and things like that, from other codes that the state pulled together to make sure that these products are properly marked and labeled and also properly packaged. So we have come a long way with packaging in cannabis. And again, this is just another picture there. You can see that Popem Barkley brand. And then finally, this is another dispensary here. This is Kalma, it's in West Hollywood. We've done a lot of modeling our ordinance around some of the things that West Hollywood has in their ordinance because they have a very solid ordinance and also received plenty of applications for their program. So it was a very desirable place. In fact, they have recently decided to expand their program to, I believe, another 40 licenses they're going to allow in their city. Their city isn't much bigger than Hawthorne, but obviously, West Hollywood does have, you know, it's a lot of shopping areas and heavy retail areas, so they can absorb a little bit more. But these are some of the photos of stores in West Hollywood so that you can see that operators are putting a lot of design elements, and we can ask for those sorts of things via our ordinance requirements and design standards as well. I know the city council has had a lot of discussions about what these operators need to do to participate in a program here, as well as meeting with the planning director to figure out some good development standards for these operations. So we plan to do, have a very robust ordinance and development standards. And you can see, these operators are pouring a lot of money into these stores, so they are here to comply. So we don't have the same issues that we did in 215 where they were unregulated, and so we didn't have a design, we didn't have any design elements or anything that we were controlling then. Next, we'll go through a little bit of the licensing overview process. I just want to have a moment to, take a moment to do a housekeeping item. If you see a red tag that says "new," that means that it was a slide that was different from our very first presentation. So the last three presentations have been identical in terms of the slide presentation, which is available online, and all of the workshops have been videoed and are online as well. And I believe they're on the city YouTube channel as well as the local channel here for news. Anything that was covered from the original workshop that we added to based on the feedback that we got from that original workshop has been added to these slides, and you'll see a little red marker there that says "new." That means that it was a slide that's been added. So I just wanted to let you all know that. The last three have been identical, so you don't have to worry. But if you're interested in going back and looking through the comments that came up or some of the discussions that we had at the previous hearings, you can do that. Also, our, every other Thursday, we have our committee meeting, our working group meeting. Those also are available to the public, and if you would like to review those, you can do that as well, as well as all of the agendas, all online on the city cannabis page. Okay, so with that out of the way, the next thing we're going to just jump into is what does it look like? What does this ordinance process look like? But before we do that, I'd just like to put up this slide so that when we're throwing out these terms, they're defined for you. So statutes are laws that are written and passed. Regulations are created by agencies that interpret those statutes. And then ordinances are usually collected, created at the local level, and they're just rules that are created by the city to help guide development in your city. And so what we're going to be working on is a cannabis ordinance based around those statutes and regulations. So the first part of our process has been community outreach, which that's what this is. We've engaged the community to say, hey, what is it that you need education on? What would you like to see as part of this ordinance? What are some of the uses that maybe you're concerned about? Because we would like to tailor our ordinance, our rules in our ordinance around some of those topics that have come up. Originally, we heard about security concerns, and so we definitely have a note about that, what the city would like to see regarding security. We have, we took some notes about other things such as the number of licenses. So we have those notes, and so today, during the Q and A, you can come to the podium and give any feedback regarding this ordinance. But you also have the cards, and feel free to submit any recommendations you have for the ordinance there as well. But we have done a really extensive community outreach effort at the city council's direction because we want the city, the residents to be engaged. After we collect all of our information, this is our last town hall, so after this one, we will be start working on that ordinance and developing it based on the feedback that we've gotten from these workshops. And then finally, or next, we'll be creating, the city council will be creating the licensing and oversight committee. So I think the city attorney will speak to this a little bit further, but the licensing and oversight committees will oversee that process. While we're consulting, consulting on the ordinance and developing, you know, the process around the ordinance, there will be a licensing and oversight committee that will oversee that process, and that those decisions will be made at the city council level. We will create an application process, and so once that is developed, we will release it to the public. You can find everything on the cannabis website. The city has gone through, you know, really extreme measures to make sure that the community is involved, and this process is very transparent. So everything is available online. We also have a cannabis email address that you can email us anytime, and that goes directly to the city attorney and the staff. And then after we create this application process, there will be a permitting process just like any other major development in your city. You will go to the planning department, and you will go through the building department. And then finally, we'll have our facilities start being constructed, especially if we're allowing cannabis cultivation sites. They do require quite a bit of undertaking there, so that building process will be overseen by the building department like any other development. And then finally, our operators will get operating, and that's when we'll be collecting the cannabis taxes for the city. So that's a quick overview, and then I'm going to pass it back to the city manager or the city attorney.
Thank you, Ebony. Obviously, this is a growing industry that the committee here and the consultants were directed by city council after passage of Measure CC. The whole, since the passage of Measure CC during 2021, city council gave several directives. There was a study session with another consultant, a revenue consultant, that projected a certain amount of revenues, tax revenue for the city based on certain number of retail license dispensary in the city. I say it's a growing industry because there were some, in some of the earlier town hall meetings, excuse me, we had some questions about, in the South Bay area, how many cities have regulated cannabis business? And as we saw on that list, there's city of Carson, but right now, the city of Hermosa Beach has a committee just like this, and they're coming up with ordinance. City of Redondo Beach is looking at drafting ordinance. City of Manhattan Beach have residents petitioning the council to pass an ordinance allowing cannabis. So it's a very growing industry. We're not in competition with any of them. We do want to come up with an ordinance that's appropriate and unique for city of Hawthorne. We don't know what that is. As you can see by the matrix, that we're at a very beginning stage. This is the last of the four town hall meetings. Then the working committee will go back and work on the ordinance. And I think for these town hall meetings, you know, first of, in the beginning, I think there was some misunderstanding that we're here to make the policy decisions, and we're not. We've been directed specifically by the city council to come up with a draft ordinance to go back to city council, and it's the city council that will approve the ordinance to be enacted for the city. So I think the purpose of a town hall meeting is not only to educate the residents about a licensed cannabis business, but also to receive your input. And when we come up with the ordinance, your input is significant, and we do want to address those issues you may have, but it's not, it would be more helpful if the residents gave certain preference of what type of business and whatnot, what should be in our ordinance. So at our last working committee, we looked at certain safety areas. For instance, the state law requires the state law requires a 600-feet radius from sensitive zones, which are mainly schools. And we're going through the map of the city to see where are the areas that may be appropriate for City of Hawthorne. During the past few months, city council have directed the working committee to look at all different types of license, so they didn't want to leave out a specific types of license. So, we're, we're looking at all these different types of license, different ordinance. We, I think so far, we're kind of in favor of the West Hollywood model because of their design elements and whatnot that was put into the, the ordinance there. But in terms of the stage where we're at, you know, in the future, we're, after we come up with a draft ordinance for the council, we're also, at the same time, need to form an oversight committee. An oversight committee is to assure the, the members to the public that we're doing things in a transparent, in a proper and legal way in coming up with this ordinance. Then, there will be a licensing committee, where that committee will review the applications, and the licensing committee will make recommendation to city council to issue license to a specific applicant. So, all of these decisions ultimately is the city council. But all these, through the three committees, this working committee, we're following the Brown Act to make sure that it's transparent, and also, the oversight committee, as well as, as well as the licensing committee will follow the Brown Act. So, everything will be made available for public to view, but we're at a very beginning stage. We haven't come up with an ordinance yet.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open it up for questions. If there's anyone in the audience that has a question, there's a mic here to the right of me. You have two minutes, and you could address it to anyone here, either on the working committee board or our consultants. And if anyone has a question, you're more than welcome to, to ask your question.
Madam Chair, may I remind everyone that they also have the cards? So, if you have a card, yes, if you have a card, you could bring that up. No questions. A lot of the questions, did you want to? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, thank you for putting this together. This is very informative, and it's, you know, very helpful for the community and also our representatives. I did have a question. I noticed you guys were talking about the 600-foot radius, and then, I also see that, it also mentions that Proposition 64 requires a 1,000-foot radius for those sensitive areas. How are we looking to, to address that?
The 600-foot radius is around schools, so that would be the baseline that the city would be looking for, to start with sensitive uses regarding schools. So, the, the planning director has identified, and during our working meeting, we identified some additional, additional sensitive uses. Those maps and things will be part of our next working group committee, so I invite you all to stay tuned for that, to see where that discussion goes. We haven't finalized what those are, what those additional requirements would look like.
I was looking in the handout, it says, the Proposition 64 makes it illegal to possess or use cannabis within 1,000 feet of schools, daycares, and youth centers. So, it sounds like, you know, one is more restrictive than the other. It's, it's the last page of the, the handout, page five.
So, I, I think the, the 1,000-feet radius is for the use and possession of the cannabis for people who are consuming it, but 600-feet radius is by state law to, the sensitive area that says radius is 600 feet from schools. So, the, the way that it's, it's, the statute is, is, is created, is that the local agencies do have the discretion of making that radius even further than 600 feet, but that's, that will be in the ordinance. But the minimum is the 600-feet radius from sensitive zones, which are the schools by state law.
And then, so, so then, how does the 1,000-foot radius work? Because it's saying possession or the use. So, say, you know, you buy, you know, cannabis from a retailer that's 600 feet, but then, as soon as you walk up the door, you're still 1,000 feet from a school.
So, the, the stores, if we strictly follow the state law, will be outside the 600-feet radius, but if the customer of this business purchases it and want to consume it, they would have to be 1,000 feet away from the, from the schools.
Okay, well, maybe we need to probably look more into, because it says possess, possesses or uses, it's not saying that, that they use it. So, it's saying if they possess it, so if it's on their, you know, person, you know, are they going to be penalized for, you know, walking out that business that's 600 feet away, but yet they're 1,000 feet away?
I'm sorry, I, I don't have the handout that you're looking at, but the, the 1,000-foot radius is typically, in the state law around Prop 64, is about use and advertising. So, you can't advertise cannabis within 1,000 feet of a school, and you can't use cannabis, though I'm not sure which handout it is, but if you let us know, we can take a look at that. But that's generally where the Prop 64, 1,000-foot language is. Some cities do have radiuses around, around, 1,000 feet around schools, so it's usually one or the other, not both.
Okay. All right, yeah, if you can just, you know, get a clarification on that, that way, when we're creating the map, we can know for sure if it's the, the 600 or the 1,000-foot radius.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question. Anyone else? Anything further to add? Okay, well, seeing that there aren't any further questions, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting. The time is six, is that the wrong clock? I keep looking up there. The time is 6:59, and I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you to the residents watching, and thank you for those that participated. This is the final town hall meeting. However, please tune into our regular cannabis working committee meetings, held every second and fourth Thursday at 11:00 a.m. Thank you so much. Have a good evening. Drive safe.